All right, good morning and welcome to the regular reading of the State County Traditions September 7th, 2022. It's all stamped with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gremm, you?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Mr. Sessner, you ready?
Okay. Got a refund? And real statement. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the real estate exoneration, Lieutenant Shore. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the refund for 125,000. Can you move it first over there?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. And I've got two consolidations. These may be a moot point unless we can get the years as the next. Are making decisions, won't accept that.
Want to have a stay?
Yeah. Ready.
I'm looking at you.
Oh, I knew I had something else.
Okay, it's the usual same property on the summer that we approved.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye. That meeting at three o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the same rule.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With that one, which is the military, more for the group. It is for the body armor and load bearing vests. It was approved in the budget, but it's over $15,000, so. The rest I just, I'm not gonna say all kind of order. Only when my insurance is exposed. Maybe for the shares. Uh, maybe we prove the shelters and expenses.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, every time.
Um, all three, yeah, all three.
Oh, okay.
We all three had to prove this. And I can't prove this. Yeah, we should.
I wish all time. Thank you, God. You're welcome.
But we don't have one of them. Do I have? I know I have the one here in the right seat. All right, so. Say it's honest. To approve the state settlements?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we go with the thing?
Yep. The first thing is the shows. These are the different product and work together if you all work here. And was, is there an order that Mr. Barrett was for show? Yes. But that's the list in my absence, like, is it just?
Um, that is the entire list, including our, these different persons who need to be obtained. It's a lot. Dahmerman, the victim Dahmerman, some things that he has been operating. Um, you have the law practice and the United States, they, well, the public did not choose the emergency that to be very soon, so. They didn't press to the different person. And then we only have three vacancies and they are two of which is very small for me, really. Good for people. And your hip will open up like letters and that thing, baby. Thank goodness Christ. We did make a couple minor adjustments, only because prison for the public, that's what two people that are down here all in the precinct. Just a model. And so we were able to move the fork right here and there, we're closer, just a couple of hundred yards. That's the one time I always. Even a little on the drive, but I wouldn't want to have to be in France at about 3:00 in the morning, you don't know. So, yeah. And lots of executive spending. So what do we need to do?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next thing is appointment of wearing the hands of the commission committee. Maybe she'll have a seat for a moment.
I don't know.
Which one?
I don't know about the meeting.
No, no, I mean, like, what?
Uh, just at large, okay.
Do we have, did we adopt that? That would be, is that a rule? You think all of the motions are in the list?
That was an opening they had, so they were pushing the rules. With on these dilapidated ones. Because we have a fire chief sitting in the back. Two is all clear for us.
Thank you. That was the hardest one to fill, I think. Two thousand years. Okay, hey, Angela?
Yeah.
Was Randy the only applicant for that at-large position on the education committee?
Yeah, I ruled you appointed him, but he had to resign, so it would be taking a community. But yeah, he was the only application that anyone received.
Okay, and how, um, did we have every slot filled on that committee yet?
Yes, every slot would be filled once we have a litter control officer. That's the only other vacancy.
Beautiful. Okay, I think we have that posted now, anyway. So that position is posted. All right, I'm moving to approve Randy Haynes for the education committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. You've got two seconds.
In unison, on search. All right. Um, let's go ahead and just start Michelle's line fifteen. The Hava Grant, Michelle.
Down there.
Just stay, you can stay right there.
Okay. Okay, so I requested. Put this on, Hava Grants are, were set up about thirty years ago with the Health American Vote Act. Um, we, there are various times, there are open and closed, there are federal, federal and state money. Um, one of the things we can purchase with this money are electronic poll books, which will replace the paper poll books, the paper you sign when you go into the voting. When you go in to vote. Um, they are expensive, like all election voting is in, which means you have to earn eighty-five percent match in this grant, which would make it much more affordable for the county than. I think it's a good idea to really process security and less of the chances of voting increasing or, um, especially early voting when the poll workers now are going to choose. But we go into the express vote machine that will eliminate that process, the automatic approval, which combination. How would I do that? You, uh, part of this, part of, any part of what it's about, what is for a printer, so you tell it. The guy, the person, John, can then sign, signs on the, um, screen from there, and it says on there. So it will then print a slip for the barcode, and that will run through the express vote machine. It might actually print on a bar socket or something. Anyway, it prints a barcode that doesn't express vote read, that shows that he'll automatically, he's supposed to vote. Which would be, like, that has been an issue.
So will it automatically, like, I'm trying to understand, would it automatically show the poll workers that we should be voting free supply or allowing them to vote free supply even though we showed up at three cent four?
Only in early voting, when, in regular election voting, when you go in and then, like, search for your name, it would show them, it would either show them in the right precinct or if they'll just know this person should be in precinct two. Or precinct whatever it is. And then it will also, we have a structure, like, how directly does a person get to that precinct? And it'll help our staff, because we get it. Um, during the day, like, that person showed up here, you know, in my poll book, I don't know what to do with them. And so then we have to, which is not hard to tell, Peter, but it would lessen that confusion as well. They're trying to be honest, you know, giving fun. It would save us money, um, it would save us one emotionally traumatic, because it is a risk work, meaning the poll book back into the system to shape their voting against the election.
Would it, would it reduce the amount of poll workers, do you think?
No, in fact, poll workers are saying, oh, we're supposed to have five of each poll rotation. Um, but it would probably make their job a bit easier, it'd be less painful being the one to check. Have, be a little bit easier on the job. And this is just the application process, I'll be quite frank. There's not a lot of money in this release of the Hava Grants. And what I'm asking for is to get it, but there's, there's. Or we wouldn't get the entire amount around. But in this case, it's probably our best shot, I think. We were told this is probably one of the last times we're going to get Hava money, especially for this, this use for security.
So it saves about forty-one hundred and fifty dollars an election. So we're looking at what the three and a half elections cycles to pay off that fifteen thousand dollars investment.
I didn't totally, but at the bottom there, I said, well, just he did, though, so.
Two thousand here, twenty-one fifty here, this, so it's kind of the forty-one fifty.
I mean, I think we could, I think it would save a lot of hassle. If it's a like.
I mean, I, I do, I mean, it's easy, it's an easy mess if we can approve it.
You can leave, but you don't have to. If you're ready to accept, you don't have to.
Right.
It's not like it's obligated to do that.
And in our reality, what you have in special, but it's always going whole almost, so there will be that.
That makes a common sense for work.
Sure.
It would speed up things with the voters, because it's about a couple of persons, you have to research, everybody, and wind that side, so.
Yes.
Oh, no, it makes, it makes all the sense in the world. I just, you know, don't know what our votes look like right now. We had a lot of unexpected instances due to flooding, so. Um, well, I'm moving to approve it.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So you have, the next thing is, I don't know if you want to discuss that now or. Um, let's see what else we can knock off.
Okay, so number four is in capital asset policy. I think we made an order to do this, but been talking to the sheet, we already. Our current, y'all are around, is twenty-five hundred dollars to be considered as capital asset, which is really kind of low when you consider what it's in policy. And gee, if I voted, maybe it should be five thousand. For like y'all to change that policy and back to twelve hundred, five thousand dollars cheaper. And it really just affects how we try to get them on capital asset policy.
Is it, how does it affect selling property, you know, option property?
No, that's the same, so, that's still a thousand dollars. This is just what we put on that capital asset. Yes.
And there's nothing to hit it with.
No. That's one of the first things we brought up, is it's in a lot of.
So it's not that.
Somehow that makes, like, age of access, you pay five thousand, six thousand, that would depreciate, but some of this stuff cannot be appreciated.
Do we have, so, just, so the question that we just changed the amount.
Change our. Other than that, there's no other change in policy, just, just may I?
I think, if you may. Do we need an order to change the capital asset from twenty-five hundred to five thousand?
I think the kind of condition that. What are you saying, an order?
Yeah, do we need an order, just a matter of minutes?
Do we have, do we have a order? I mean, I think as long as it's, as long as it's reflected, if the county provision voted on it, it'd make that through.
That's kind of what I.
I mean, I think either it covered us as long as it's in the minutes.
The one's coming out and put it on. Financial statement, mention, the minutes. Okay, I think then it's time to re-approve the raise from twenty-five hundred to five thousand.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Last thing. Yeah, we need some extra. Um, so. I think we can probably go ahead and. What you want, you know, that.
I, I.
Do I go to, do the, like, the rotation stuff? No, that, that one has to come off, not very. All right, so Gary, with regard to the, to B and M tow.
Yes, I have a, I have a, basically the complaint, and the complaint is filed by Bill Fox of Fox Towing.
Here, here, would you mind coming forward to? The complaint was filed by Bill Fox, Fox Towing, against B and M Towing. And Kevin Walker basically investigated the complaint and pretty much found that, uh, the complaint was valid. And there was many rules and regulations that was basically going against, as far as the record is basically, uh, the commission, as far as, which regulates towing. And there's a letter attached from, uh, Mike, Michael Fox, excuse me, that are attached from him. There is also attached the bill from B and M Towing. And then, which also attaches the rules and regulations that was violated. And there were many. And basically, if you go to the last part, it's grounds for removal or suspension, and a wrecker service owner operator willfully and knowingly violated this policy. Wrecker service fails to meet the requirements set by this policy or otherwise comply with the provisions of this policy and policies set forth by the West Virginia Public Service Commission Motor Carrier Division. And then, on the last page is the complaint that, uh, the owner of the vehicle filed with the Public Service Commission. And that's pretty much their investigating as well, but, uh, everything that I've seen and what Kevin Walker has investigated, I find to be true. And obviously, it's like driver's license, it's a privilege to have a driver's license, and it's a privilege to be on his wrecker rotation. And with what I see, uh, it's outrageous, the charges, and, uh, Mike Fox can basically attest to that, and my recommendation would be to be an MB removed.
Mr. M, too.
You want to sit on after? He's closing after that microphone.
Okay. All right, first of all, I mean, I've been in business for twenty-two years, keeping contact with public ser, public services, I've not got one complaint, never. Not one complaint in twenty-two years. Okay, first thing, we worked a wreck that was down at Mossy TNC. How long does it take to drive to Mossy TNC from here in Hilltop or anywhere? You're looking at twenty, twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes tops. Okay, that's in and out, that's an hour's trip right there. Okay, we get on scene, we're asked to wait so, so that, uh, the officers can finish their report. Okay, after that, uh, asked to go ahead and take the report since it was blocking the roadway. Uh, so I went ahead and loaded the board up, cleaned up all the debris. We never towed the other vehicle, we only towed the one. Then everybody pulls out and leaves Mr. Bernard standing on the side of the road. Okay, this guy's from outside. What are we supposed to do? So I asked him if he needed a ride over to a motel or something or another. Instead of leaving him standing down Mossy at twelve something at night. And anyhow, long story short, I took him to the motel, waited for him for twenty minutes to get checked in, because he asked me to wait so he could get some of his stuff out of his car. I waited there for twenty minutes for him doing this, then turned around, and then he asked me to pull around the other side so he could get a few things. We didn't get a few things, he unloaded the whole car. So I sat there for another thirty minutes, waiting on him to unload. Then after we sat there all this time, then he wouldn't even give me the keys to the car. So I'm stuck with the car sitting on the back of my flatbed with no keys. The front wheel's ripped off because he's not pulled across the road and hit somebody head, head on. So when I get the car, finally get the car to my shop, we turn around and, uh, try to get it off of there, and where the front wheel's almost ripped off, and he kept wanting to drive over the side of the rollback. So finally, I had to end up taking a wrecker and hooking a snatch block to a tree in front of it, run it back to the vehicle, pull it off of there. Okay. And also, let's see. Then after the vehicle was unloaded, I had to clean up all the debris again, because I mean, this was a nice Mustang, so we didn't throw all the debris in the trash inside of these vehicles, we voted on my bed of my wrecker. So I went and got trash bags, cleaned up all that trash. By that time, it was two thirty-five in the morning. I started this job, left out of the house at four forty, or ten forty-five. Okay, then there was this, uh, let's see, on the other statement, Mr. Fox, that stated I towed the vehicle illegally. Well, I was called by Ms. Fox at eight fifteen that morning. I was called from Ms. Fox at eight fifteen on the twentieth, whenever they finally figured it out. And there's a copy of my, my, the thing, you can see where Fox's body shop, one thing, and what you call it. Okay, it said I towed it, towed the vehicle illegally to their shop. Well, I didn't, you know, Ms. Fox called me, I, I respect my elders, you know, I've towed her for thirty years. So I loaded the vehicle, I took it to her shop, just like I was asked to. But the problem was, when the vehicle was loaded on the scene of the wreck, the only way to get to it, because the other wrecker was getting the other vehicle, was to load it from the rear. So, no keys to this vehicle, so what we done is, we took a wrecker, pulled it back out of a parking spot, put a strap in the front wheel, extended the bone, pulled it, pulled it all the way around facing forward. Because we couldn't get it off of there in our yard, so I didn't want to go to Fox's and do the same thing. And, uh, then we took and ran a strap through the front, both front wheels, because like I say, one wheel's ripped practically plumb off. Took, uh, then pulled it up onto the flatbed just far enough to get the back wheels on, because of course, no keys. So that meant when we got to Fox's, we had to slide it off. Okay, and I have been in contact with Public Service Commission, and, uh, I just talked to him yesterday, they actually called me back, and he doesn't see any problem with any of this. I mean, you're welcome to look at the bill. Like he said, we was out there working in the middle of the night. And I mean, you're looking at a fourteen hundred dollar tow bill, but you're not looking at the storage where the vehicle sat there all this time, you're not looking at all the winch, winching time we spent on this vehicle due to not having keys. And I, the bad part was, I was in contact with Mr. Bernard all the whole week that the vehicle sat there. He called me, wanted to know if the insurance company could. He even called me and asked me if I could cover his vehicle, because of course, when he didn't give me the keys, the windows were down, and it was raining, so I covered his car. But, like I say, uh, I, I, I don't see where I, I overcharged, but I do think a lot of this has come into effect because the day after I delivered this vehicle to Mike Fox, and y'all are welcome to keep this, this is a copy of the nine-one-one record. Y'all can play it if you'd like. It shows where nine-one-one called me to sixty-one to work a wreck at Fraser Creek Mines. Well, I didn't know Mr. Fox was the brother wrecker company. I got on scene first, so I knew the owner of the Toyota truck. I took the newer Toyota truck, Mr. Fox got a oh-four, oh-five Cobalt that caused the accident, and got out on scene, run his mouth to me, and anyhow, then this, all this started. And like I said, you're welcome to listen to this. I even have it recorded on my phone, uh, where, yeah, all this. But there's been tow bills turned in higher than that ten to fifteen years ago.
Well, we're not looking at ten to fifteen years ago, we're looking at what the PSC allows.
Okay, and like I say.
What our, our nine-one-one records service is to take care of. One thing that jumps out at me is, uh, just request for us to hotel. One thing that jumps out at me is a customer request for a hotel, and was charged two hundred and ninety-six.
Well, it's not charged to, where do you see two hundred and ninety-six dollars?
Right here. Customer charge, ride, tow, fill.
No, 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 that's your storage. That is your storage. Well, it's your, your, your storage is here, one twenty-five is what it starts. This is where the, that in my shop for, for eight days of storage, that's not. Huh, what do you mean, a place? No, I don't have, I didn't bring a picture of it with me today, no.
I haven't gone out there, but all I, if you look at the regulations, there's so many one here that identify information regarding to the towed vehicle, including a general description of the vehicle, make, model, itemized, itemization of the charges for towing, including a statement of the hourly and per unit tariff rates applicable, applicable to the tow, which isn't on there. Storage time, including daily fee, daily fee for storage, that's not on there. Any other services rendered?
I did, you know, it was two hundred and ninety-six dollars for eight days. Yes, it's on there.
Here, I'll tell you what my view is. My view is, I want to let the PSC investigate, make a decision.
And I agree too, those are the other information.
Like I say, and if you could listen to the conversation on the nine-one-one record.
I don't want to interfere with the business while the experts investigate. I mean, I, because I do think the date it was on, the number of days is on there.
It equals right, that's exactly what it's supposed to be. And, and like I say, I waited approximately, what was it, twenty or thirty minutes for him to go in and, or thirty minutes for him to unload, twenty minutes for him to check in, it equaled up to one twenty-five. Yeah, that, then you know, that was a lot of the problem in the first place, because once we wasn't, didn't have the keys, then you know, we were forced to drag the vehicle because it's stuck in park.
What's the physical address of your shop?
Two-three-nine North Arrington Road. Two-three-nine.
Oh, two-three-nine.
Yes. North Arrington, E-R-R-I-N-T-O-N.
All the tow bills, we have access to all the tow bills.
I don't, I have no clue. But that, but another thing.
It's totally different than it's different that if you called him, if you called him from your house and when your car's there, or if you were called by the sheriff's department, and it was called by nine-one-one, there is a public service rate per hour that they're allowed to charge, and they're not supposed to go over there.
Unlike this. Yeah, because I mean, I've been the one picked out in the whole bunch, and everybody else, I mean, you know, and like I say, I, I think my record stands pretty good, I mean, I've been in business for twenty-two years, I don't have one single complaint down there at Public Service Commission until now. And then all of a sudden, like I say, I worked this wreck on sixty-one at Fraser Creek Mines, the next, you know, Mike gets out, runs his mouth to me, next thing I know, I have this here against me. So.
I mean, one other thing, like, like I said, there's other things on here, the name, trade name, any other address and telephone number. Your build, like your build does not have your address as a tow box. And address, and address would help, because this man might not know where that is.
Well, you know what, I gave the man a card whenever I dropped him off at the motel, so he could call me for any information he needed. He didn't have no problem calling me all during that week to check on his car if the insurance had determined what they was doing. And I keep cards in every one of my tow trucks, and I give them, even if I get a DUI, I give the guy a card so that he knows where to call and find his vehicle.
Okay, let's, we have rules and regulations that we in the commission have approved from the record shows. Mr. Evans, I suggest that you get a hundred percent with those rules and regulations. Gary, I want you to work with him, is a week long enough to get everything taken care of?
Well, like I say, all I'm waiting on is Public Service Commission.
No.
I mean, then this. What else?
I, I would assume you have a copy.
Yes, yeah, I've got a copy of it, it's in here.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm going to be being doing all the record rotations until or unless there's a negative decision by the Public Service Commission. All those in favor, aye.
The recording from the nine-one-one scene. Uh, do you have, Tate, what, if you give me your number, I'll, I'm glad to send it to you, because I have it recorded on my phone anyway. In case y'all wasn't able to hear. Thank you, sir.
In the meantime, I suggest that you get up to date with all the record policy. And I'm going to be visiting your North Arrington Road today.
Okay. Okay, that'd be fine. Good to go, alright, thank you.
So at prior meeting, I don't remember what day, I think it was the last meeting. We voted to give the River Community Society sixty days notice to vacate animal shelter, the discussions with them, emails with them, they've asked for an extension on that time, and we also would not do the flooding and some of the other issues we have, and county emergency issues. Patent, ABR pads for another organization to get in there, so I've sent all the requests out to my colleagues, and I don't know what you guys are thinking. I think we got it soon, at least sixty days. Sixty come today, that's, that's a thing we need to discuss. So I think they would have about thirty days left, I think, today. They give them till ninety days, get them closer to their goal of they're trying to find another facility that's
Just sixty days.
Yeah. So. You okay, I've got, alright, so I move that we extend the notice, and we'll go ahead and we refrain from sending out the letter in anticipation, we will make a decision today about whether we extend the original notice we gave to the River Community Society by sixty days.
Sure.
All those in favor, aye. Alright, let's take you to ten minute break.
I have a sentencing at eleven, shouldn't take long.
For a while, man. Put it in my stuff.
But I mean, I don't look for it to last long.
Alright, we're back from break, let's talk about the fire levy contracts and the fire coordinator position. Who's going to lead? Is that you, Gary, or?
Mr. Better.
Michael, or?
Do you want me to start? Sure, I'd be happy. So the, the commission reached out to me to take a look at the current fire levy agreements that were in place with the volunteer fire department. And to kind of review the agreements to make sure that they're, they were factually in compliance with the county obligations under statutes and constitutions, as well as with an eye at ensuring transparency with respect to the taxpayer dollars as it relates to the levy. So I reviewed the old levy agreements, I looked at the various statutes that relate to fire levy agreements volunteer fire departments, as well as the county commission's constitutional and statutory obligations regarding fiscal affairs. And ultimately, after reviewing the agreements that were already in place, much of them were, were, were well in compliance and were ultimately fine. However, there were some areas to tighten, some of the things that were under the agreements. For example, the agreements as presently stands have a number of forms and reporting requirements related to the use of these levy dollars, taxpayer dollars. But the enforcement of maybe filling out those forms, or when exactly do you need to turn in the forms, certain requirements regarding those forms were not really outlined in the agreement, so we sought to tighten those up by just putting deadlines. You know, the forms are all essentially the same that they've always been, but instead of just having the forms and turning them in, you know, whenever, or kind of a knock tournament, we just put deadlines on when the forms are. In fact, to, to help with that, we even put an appendix as fact that outlines when the forms are due and the due date time. Again, all those forms were, were already previously attached to the agreement. And so that, that was really, in my mind, a minor change to the agreement specifically, but taking the use of those forms to make sure that they are being turned in, things like that. The second issue, and this is really the only other, honestly, in my opinion, change related to the fire levy agreement, is relates to the property. So when we were looking at this and looking at some of the case law, attorney general opinions and things like that, that relate to the use of the levy funds, the attorney general actually did a crime in interpreting the levy statute that the county commission is not entitled to just give a lump sum money to volunteer fire. In fact, the county commission actually had to give me out in item by item, that was a nineteen sixty-eight opinion by the attorney general. So in other words, what we needed to ensure compliance with was that the commission just didn't give a lump sum payment, payment to the volunteer fire department, they could just spend down and just kind of document their spending. Instead, what we needed to do is ensure we're in compliance with the attorney general's opinion of nineteen sixty-eight, that the commission is actually approving item by item use of the levy dollars. And so what we ventured to do in this agreement is to put into place provisions that were linked to that. Now, we understand that things happen, that you can't rush to and schedule a meeting with the county commission every time you go buy a piece of equipment. So what we ventured to do in this is to set limits that if you're under a certain amount of money, you just, you buy it, and at the end of the quarter, you seek reimbursement for that from the levy fund. If it's between a certain amount, you can go to the spending authority, county commission spending authority designate, and they can give you that approval. And then if it's over the spending authority designate limit, you have to come to the commission prior to expending that money. And so ultimately, that, that's really a change that has become necessary due to review law on this issue, reviewing the attorney general's opinion regarding how aid may be given to volunteer fire companies under the statutory authority related to levies. And then so also, the final change, and, and, and all of this kind of relates to, to the property. You know, how are you spending this money to obtain property? Well, we have to put in requirements that relate to the law. And then what the county commission, and, and based upon my advice and opinion, is that because this is taxpayer money, that when the equipment no longer has a use to the fire department, and the fire department determines we don't have a use for this anymore, or this truck no longer meets our need, we need a new truck, that that property, because it was purchased with taxpayer dollars, will revert to the county, so the county can dispose of that property pursuant to the law. There's certain statutory requirements for county property, county that has to be followed when you're disposing of property generally, it's basically over a thousand dollars, you have to auction it off. And so the county commission recognizes that buying and selling a truck, for example, may result in some, some cash here and there, and so the commission, per agreement, this new agreement will take any money that is earned off of the auctioned off items. So if they hit a truck, they auction it off, and they get fifty thousand dollars, or that money will be set aside into a special fund that can only be utilized and requested through the volunteer fire. So it wouldn't go back into the general revenue stream of the county, it would still be segregated for fire use. So if I can buy a fire truck, you determine, we don't need it anymore because it's old, it doesn't work, whatever, revert back to the county, the county auctions it off, whatever money they get goes back into a fund that is to be used solely and exclusively for fire departments. And really, that's what the changes are in this agreement. We tightened up some of the language in the agreement, there was a lot of language in the agreement that basically copied and pasted the code of state rules and regulations regarding training and things like that. We took that out because that's between you and the fire. That the county commission doesn't really want to parrot that language. The only thing the county commission wants to ensure is that firefighters are in compliance with the, with the training requirements by the county fire. Right, so we took out a lot of that language related to training, we tightened up the agreement. There's no need for that language to be in there, because again, they're not the enforcer of your training. Right, they just want to ensure that the fire departments have trained in, in firefighters that meet with that, the statutory and regulatory requirement. And that's, so we tightened up that one. Other than that, there's really no other changes to the agreement. Now, the county is in this agreement because we're trying to get a handle on a property that has been purchased with fire levy money, is wanting inventory lists of what property was bought by fire levy money, so that we can have a running list of knowing what the month that the county taxpayer dollars are going for. There's going to be forms, we're still modifying and working on a form, Gary just gave me an additional inventory form. Now, again, these forms are just designed to make your daughter's easiest pop. Fill out the form, turn it in, that's it, you don't have to create your own documents, you don't have to figure out what we're looking for. And again, all but the inventory list forms are the same forms that you've already, were supposed to be using under the prior agreement. So based upon that, that's the agreement that, that I've come up with after consultation with the county commission, as well as reviewing the applicable law and standards related to this fire levy, the county commission's fiscal responsibilities, as well as attorney general's opinion interpreting how the levy is supposed to be. So.
Would you also explain to them the provision you explained to us about if something was bought in part with municipality dollars?
Okay, yeah, so to be perfectly blunt, there appears to be a bit of a conflict in the law related to town versus municipality, but we, we perfected, there's a statute that provides that if a municipality contributes to the purchase of equipment, when it's done, it goes back to municipality. We preserve that statutory requirement in there, so foresee, so in theory, there could be a situation where the municipality of Oak Hill and the county commission go pass on a new truck, right? But when you're done with, the Oak Hill is done with that truck, Oak Hill Fire Department is done with that truck. But when you're done with, the Oak Hill is done with that truck, Oak Hill Fire Department is done with that truck, it would revert back to municipality. Where the municipality has control, uh, not the county commission. But if no municipality funds are used to purchase the equipment, then it's our position that it revert back to the county. So, um, I, I, I know that we ventured to review it by Friday of last week and we failed, uh, in that. That's my fault. Um, and so, uh, what I would, I don't know if you had a chance to review it, uh, but I would be happy to answer any questions about it. Uh, or just more generally discuss it with, again, it's my, my belief that ninety-eight percent of it is the same as the old agreement. The only thing that's different is we put in certain deadlines related to the forms, which you were already supposed to be filling out. Anyway, we just put when do we want? There was, you know, specific dates, um, as well as we cleaned up, uh, and brought into compliance the language regarding the, the use of the money. It had to be item by item pursuant to this attorney general's opinion of nineteen sixty-eight. Um, they can't disperse, uh, public funds, uh, but they have to, uh, uh, be expended after present, presentment to an approval by the county commission for the benefit. Such volunteer by attorney general's opinion. Uh, so follow that until the Supreme Court of Justice, otherwise we would legislate.
Can I add a little bit of that?
Absolutely.
So, in addition to what he's saying, and like, like, like I said, there is an inventory list that has to be filled out. And the reason for that is this, it's accountability. If we get, uh, a form that you, some fire departments bought two axes, two ceiling hooks, three of this, three of that, you're gonna get it. But if you get them, we're gonna get two axes, two ceiling hooks, three of this back. Meaning if they're broken, give us a broken one back, you'll get your new one. Because when you buy a new fire engine, buy something, it, it comes with the equipment that you want on it, or you take it off the equipment that you're, the piece you're getting rid of and putting it on a new piece of equipment. So it's all about accountability. Going online all the time, selling all kinds of fire stuff. I bought all kinds of fire stuff online. Municipalities, on the other hand, can get, you usually get pallet loads, they'll get old novels from this department, old this, this department, old this. You know, put it on a pallet, on Oakfield.com, boom, they're selling a pallet worth of stuff. So the fire levy money paid for it. And if you're turning it in, you want an axe, fire levy money to pay for it, we want a broken axe, a worn out axe in return. And eventually we'd like to get a, a property disposal, disposal person to handle disposing of stuff. But I've bought enough stuff online. I know what a little nozzle goes for, a cap for your pump, digger for a lot of money. And old stuff can be brought back, go back into the fire levy. It's just about accountability. It's all it is. For instance, back when the flood down in Hamilton Holler, people said their deer was contaminated. Boots, rope bags, PFDs. They want new ones. They're gonna get new ones. Give me back a rope bag, some boots, a PFD that was contaminated so it can be disposed of. Not so somebody can sell it online or something like that. So it's just about accountability.
But it, yeah, accountability and also I mean, it's taxpayer dollars that are going to this. And, and it's really, it's about accountability, but also transparency. Uh, because this levy goes up to the voters every so often. And so, so if we, so if the commission can show the transparency, we're not really nearly spending your money like we're providing the need for the fire prevention. And like, look, they need a new axe. If this axe broke, we replace it. Transparent, right? It's all documented, it's all transparent. So there can be no question of misuse of, of taxpayer dollars. Uh, cause ultimately at the end of the day, it's the county commission's not only constitutional, but statutory obligation to control the fiscal affairs of this county and to be good steward of the taxpayer's dollar uh, with respect to that. And that's ultimately what this is. It's not in any way to hamstring your operations. It's not in any way to, to deny you what you need. Uh, it's more so creating a paper for, creating transparency, uh, that, that all of this is here. Again, I, I, I really do, I think when you read it, we use a lot of the same lang, I mean, we, we started with the old fire levy agreement. And then we modified it. We didn't start from scratch. We didn't reinvent the wheel. The vast majority of the language is exactly the same. We've only tightened it up in certain areas. Again, and I think, you know, from my perspective, if I, if I have to fill out forms, I'd like to know when they would be due. I mean, you know, I wouldn't like to have it kind of be in, up in the air as to when it's due. We created a timeline and we even put a separate commissioner Taylor requested, put an appendix that just has the dates up there solely so you don't have to go back and read through. You can pull that appendix out, put it on your desk and you'll know, okay, December thirty-first is coming up. I need to get these forms into the commission, which they were forms that were already supposed to be submitted in. All we did was just put a deadline and, uh, that, that's really what we did there. And then again, this attorney general's opinion about presentment to the county commission for item for item, we had to come into compliance with that. We, we, if the attorney general says that's what the law is, so the Supreme Court says otherwise, we, we have a duty and obligation to follow. Um, and so that's, that's really, uh, what the other provisions regarding the, 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 um, kind of tiered system of who do, who can you present to, to get that, that equipment? You know, anything under fifteen thousand dollars, you don't have to come before it, go to the spending deficit. Uh, and, and they can approve it. So that, that should help you that if you have kind of an emergency situation where you need to spend ten thousand dollars because a piece of your equipment broke, you don't have to try to get on these and, uh, then it goes right to the desert spending deficit. They have the authority of the commission to authorize the spending.
I'd like to add a couple of things. One is the dates aren't arbitrary. Um, we base the dates on the budget cycle. So that's when we're gonna need to, we, December thirty-first is one of the major dates, just so the information can get in before our February and March budget cycle time. So we know, we can include in the budget what, what you guys need. Um, another is the designees. We, we do it every year, um, but at least till the end of this year. And it's, I think with this commission, probably always the primary will be Ruth, um, our county administrator. Um, secondary is Commissioner Luiso's. And the only exception is with regard to sheriff stuff, cause we're signed on the sheriff's department, but, um, but otherwise, that's fifteen thousand below. We gave you some leeway. I can't remember the dollar amount, fifteen hundred or fourteen ninety-nine. Um, that you can spend on your own without coming through us. Um, and.
Without prior approval.
Prior.
Because again, under the attorney general's opinion, it has to be presented to the commission and they have to approve it. So for the items that are under fifteen hundred, you'll continue kind of, I think you do quarterly reimbursements now. It's just, it would be the same quarterly reimbursement process. It's for the expenditures that are over fifteen hundred dollars. The commission is requesting prior approval before you obligate that money, uh, with respect to that. And we kept the, in the old fire levy agreement, there was a bid process. It was over a certain amount and you had to solicit bid. Um, we, we just kept, we, that's the same language that's in no fire. We didn't modify that. So there, there still is some bidding requirements for amount of a certain, uh, for a certain amount.
Another thing is.
And, and what is the money spent on? It has to be on, uh, fire levy approved items.
Right, right. Yeah. For, for things that fall inconsistent with what the fire levy said. Um, the language of the fire.
Okay. So I was just gonna add, and as far as meetings, we can't for any purpose spend more than fifteen thousand dollars without meeting. And I mean, it's unfortunate, but that's just how it is. Like we have the floods, we had to have emergency meetings to fund some things related to the floods. Um, the good news is, um, we only need two or three. So we not have one time that we had to have an emergency meeting. And we'll even do it on Zoom like real quick and just knock out the decision. We don't wanna do it on a regular basis. But if something does come up and you have an expense that exceeds fifteen thousand dollars, um, you can go to the fire coordinator and, and Gary and, and get, get something set up with us. Get on the agenda and, and somebody will contact me and I'll contact my colleagues and to try to all three be here. But it's, it's never happened that all three of us couldn't, couldn't be in an emergency meeting yet. So, um, and you only need two of us. And we usually are able to respond, especially in an emergency case. But that's not something we would wanna do. We had region four for a while would want us to, oh, we need this letter of support, you know, yesterday. We're like, no, we're not gonna start meeting on that kind of thing. But that's not an emergency. That's poor organization on their, you know what I mean? But, um, so I just wanted to let you know that if something exceeds that, we're, we're here unwilling to meet to address it.
How does that affect the department, the county or our charge of municipal department? Where the money was given quarterly and it's not given to the volunteer fire department, given to the municipal government to handle the, uh, with all the writing of checks. Area boards has to be submitted to the municipal government for approval, approved by a county council. And then all that has been offered by the doctor, same way. Does the, does the contract change that?
As far as I'm concerned, it will because we are the ones responsible for that money, not the municipal government. Um, so as far as I'm concerned, every fire department will be treated the same. Um, what about? Don, did you hear what his question was?
Yes, and then I, I agree with you. And, um, Mr. Taylor also has a question that came in.
Yeah, so to, to be, yes, the, the, the county commission would not give a quarterly, uh, disbursement to the municipality prevent it to be spent down through because to be, to be, uh, blunt, I'm not sure that that's consistent with the attorney general's opinion as to how this levy money could be used. Um, you know, because the, the attorney general's opinion is, is clear that it has to be presented to the county commission and approved by the county commission. Like the county commission can designate a spending authority person, but I don't think that it's consistent with the attorney general's opinion to give a lump sum to a municipality to then administer the fire levy fund, how they need it. And then, you know, it, it's not an appropriate pass through. Uh, I don't think under the statute that, that allow the municipality to, to administer county taxpayer levy funds.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, like this, the, it doesn't, the municipality and county work together on purchasing, let's say, a, a, an engine. I think the way this is supposed to be done is that the municipality says, I want this much money for a new engine. The county says, okay, we can come up with this much money. It's a mutual agreement in a request. And then the funds is either authorized or not. Basically, that's what, but with, with the municipalities.
Correct. Um, a question was received that if a fire department uses levy money and state money to pay for apparatus, how does that work if county auctioning off the truck once it's replaced and keeping money in special account? Should some of the sale money not go back to the state account? I'm gonna give you the, the longer answer of it depends on the circumstances of what was the state funding that was given to, uh, to the, uh, to the, the fire department. Uh, because when the state obligates money, it obligates it under different statutory authorities. So we would have to look at the specific statutory authority, um, and, uh, determine in that face by face situation with the state. Um, just because the state doesn't always, the, the, when the state gives you money, it doesn't always revert back to the state. Uh, it depends on the state. With municipality, there is no, it's, the law is clear that if the municipality contributes to the equipment, it goes back to the municipality. I hope that clarified that answer as best as I can. Um, broadly speaking, it would be a face by face basis with the state. It would depend on how that money is given to the fire department. Uh, but there's no uncertainty with municipality. In case the statute is clear, uh, it's a municipality. Any, any other question?
Sure, other people won't hear what I have to say. First off, I think you agree that, uh, we need an opportunity to use this, uh, to say, return the police. Uh, maybe we need a chance to look at it and make comments off the cuff based on what we have. That to look at. Um, in regard to the first issue, what was the, uh, requirements under the, the court of the courts? Uh, we had always had the ability of the fire coordinator free tables for people who have got behind on their, on their, on their accord. Simply, I, I usually simply freeze, uh, that, that, I, I will need. I'll, I'll mention, we said one five chief. So we're serious. I think you knew that. But, uh, and so, without talking to all the fire chiefs, I don't think we have a problem that long as freezing. What you're saying, December thirty-first, the new report that goes through December thirty-first. Understand, you know, it takes a while to, you don't issue what I, uh, uh, can actually force to December thirty-first on December thirty-first. Uh, normally there's a thirty day light to allow to do that. Uh, I, I don't. We see that at the tent, but we didn't put it sitting there. On the other issue, uh, where we had a contract, uh, equipment with, go back to the county, uh, our intent was under state law, uh, which goes if the department ceased to exist, if it was expanded, all that, and put it reverted back. And under state law, there was an authority under jurisdiction, which in case municipality would be a municipality. But, uh, so, but on that, it's only intended to satisfy the state statute that if the department was expanded, not taken back, something right away. One of the main legitimate issues to this, uh, we buy a fire truck. The county doesn't totally pay for the truck. There's volunteers, there's donated money, there's money the volunteers raised, making fat sales, hot dog sales. What would be one this weekend if I could never tell us that? There aren't.
No, I don't mean to interrupt you. I don't even want to interrupt you, uh, Mr. Krochak, but there is a, the, the form in there we did change to show how much levy money you requested and how much donated money and where the money come from. It was, I'm just letting you know. Okay, but, but that's what I'm saying. There, there is a, there is a new form in there that shows that.
And there's also insurance money. So they catch a lot of different places. So, uh, everything should go back to the county. But the intent was when you sell a, a, a piece of firefighting equipment, that it wasn't totally fit for, but that, that sale, and, and for a reason to, you want to get rid of that old piece of equipment. But, uh, it was to go back, it was applied to the purchase of the new truck. It's part of the funding package. You know, every, every time we've got, every financing, funding package, and configure all that stuff out. Uh, it's a little more complicated issue there. We've got all these different funds combined.
I think we agree on that.
Look at that.
And I think like moving forward, it's gonna be more streamlined and easy to track. Looking backward, it's gonna be a little more difficult.
One of the, this, uh, and, and, and so I'd say, and, uh, we get our, uh, so what a rescue to put up the campaign. And we got through this process, we can get it replaced. I can remember July two thousand one, three major floods like we've never seen in one month. Sometimes you don't have time, you know, if you need something replaced, I might have another problem next time. And, you know, we've been under constant threat of flooding, that it seems like for the last couple. Uh, so we've been concerned about delays. And that's, uh, I'm not saying, okay, accept that. I'm saying that's concern. And, and so, um, my other concern is it's been three months without a contract. And now, oh, there's something else we need to say. And now, oh, there's something else we need to say. We're still trying to bid stuff, uh, when we were supposed to get that line for, uh, when the code didn't like the bid length. We still haven't gotten, but you don't lie. After we redid something, because you won't tell us what's wrong. Now, we need that information. Uh, everything's just going extremely slow.
Mr. Kropchen.
Processes.
When, when you wasn't here at that time, but at that time, I informed the fire coordinator what he needed to have. That was a bid ending date, not all of them had those. Um, not all of the um. Bids had, um, it has to be received by this date and they will be opened on this date. Uh, and I informed the fire coordinator at that time what he needed. Uh, we also informed the fire coordinator that he needed to take those bids. And send them back to all of the contractors. Um, so we had never at any time said that, that he could not bid those out. We just said make sure that they're done per state codes.
We need this. I need a process. Right now, I feel a lot of the party.
Uh, I believe either the prosecuting attorney or Mr. Taylor has those. And they have, it's, they have looked at those and they can tell you what the language was correct or not correct. But I remember specifically the, the closing date on the bids, let's, let's say they have to be in by September seventh, which is today. They can't come in at five o'clock in the seventh, and would it still be good? Some of them just didn't even have a closing date and, um, Anthony, can you help with that?
I thought that's all I was asked for is, is. You know, the issue of, uh, the bids did not, the, the appetite, speaking of this. Did not have a date specified, and the bids had a piece of that deadline received. Of the bids, that was the issue. A little process, who do I send this language to and say, okay?
Well, there was another matter too, and that is the envelope on the outside did not say. What project they were bidding for. Because if we're opening bids for project A, we want to know it's for project A, especially when we're bidding out, in that case, six or seven different projects. Yeah, it was a lot, but, so we could make sure we had them, make sure every envelope. Complying with the deadlines that each of the separate bids that all had different language in them. I mean, there just needs to be.
These are the bids from June twenty eighth.
Well, and I want to make it, I, I just want to make a quick comment, because you guys have been on the agenda multiple times in the past periods. Which is unprecedented, and normally you like in here once or twice and that's it. So we are giving it a whole lot of attention despite having floods, having the humane society issues and other things. That are clamoring at us, personnel issues that are also high priority issues. So you can be patient with us while we get the language. I thought we had already gotten you that language on the, on the bidding.
So you agree.
If you would write up the ad. And give it to Ruth, Ruth will pass it to Anthony and Anthony will take a look at it and make sure it's right.
And you said a good half full day and a open day. This, well, that's what I remember.
Initially was there wasn't a deadline. And the first markers should. I mean, you can do it either way, um, I mean, at the end of the day, it doesn't necessarily matter whether. It, it says first mark or received, it would probably preferable to specify a receive simply because. You know, we're going to get into a situation where conceivably if it was marked by the deadline, I didn't often receive it until that.
But that's all statutory, could you, could you have somebody put something together for them that just, that is in the, in the ad that is. Compliant with the statute and has some additional considerations of having the things written on the outside of the envelope. If you're. So that way, that way we can get them just language and you can use that language and everything and just change the deadline and change the project name.
Do it right.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah.
But, I understand. So basically, the reason the fire levy contractor on today is because we were going to vote on the language. We provide to you, then you guys will have to look at it and decide what to come back with on it. So.
Sure, and, and, yeah, and like, I just have two, three quick comments in, in response to what you said. Uh, first is with respect to like the hard deadline dating, uh, hard deadline. The thing that there's a hard deadline on are not uh, financial uh, things with respect to expenses. For example, an inventory list is due by December thirty first. You know, there's no finances that need to be closed out, you know, by December thirty first. December thirty first requires training rent, you know, December thirty first requires a next twelve month expenditure forecast. Um, and an active firefighter. Things where there is financial things such as quarterly reimbursements. They're, they're due a number of days after the end of the quarter, so it is built in that if there is a financial thing, you do have. Time to close it out and make that.
At, of this day.
Sure, so like if you want to reimburse. Well, I mean, I, I understand that, but thi- this is something that, that.
Report, reports representing December thirty first, obviously by the fifteenth of January, the thirtieth of January.
I think it's in there, isn't it a, a blue way of ending?
Yeah, for a quarterly, you know, expenses and things like that, but certain like lists, like an active firefighter list is due with a date, date certain. Um, you know, as of that date, this is our active firefighters, as of this date, this is our inventory list, as of this date, this is our. Next twelve months projected by financial uh. Expenditures, and again, uh, we put language in there that, you know, we want to see your next twelve month expected expenditures, but again, everybody knows. Didn't happen, you can't predict the future, but if you at least can forecast out what you're intending to spend it on. That'll give the commission an idea so they can consider that with their budgeting and things of that nature, obviously things come up during the year. Sorry, we didn't project it, we didn't know our fire truck was going to fall and, you know, drive into the river, right? You know, we, so we, we had to, so, so there's in the agreement specify that, you know, there, there are in the way with respect to that. With respect to the concerns about delays, everybody understands that concern, and that's why we try to build in these, this tiered system. Where you don't have to get a commission meeting for fifteen thousand or under. The problem that we face is the commission, under the attorney general's opinion. Has to approve each and every expenditure of funds. For fifteen thousand dollars or more, the commission said that's a serious expenditure of county taxpayer money that we, the commission need to consider. Um, and, and so it's a compliance with law on that one, and then the taking it back, you are correct regarding the disbandment. Where the property reverts, however, as the commission, as this is the taxpayers' money that the commission is. Uh, responsible for the, the commission can put stipulations with respect to the expenditure. One of the stipulations the commission is putting is reverting back to the.
You're not intending that the county commission could decide to close down the fire department, it's county to take all of it, but.
No, I, I mean, I don't think under the law they're entitled to do it.
I think that you got to go to state fire marshal in order to do that.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then how can we do that if we got, if somebody has to go to state fire marshal, but either, either.
But I mean. And, and again, I want to be crystal clear, in the agreement, the commission has absolutely zero say. As to when you decide you don't want that equipment anymore. And the, the agreement specifically indicates that the fire department gets to decide. We're done, it's broken, we can't use it, or we don't want to use it. The commission has zero authority to come in and say, we're taking it back, zero authority under the agreement to do that. They're not the experts, they wouldn't know what's, what's useful or not. With respect to the issue, and this was raised in a question that was submitted. I use fire trucks as an example, that was probably a bad example because I understand fire trucks are expensive and lots of funding sources come to. Obviously, the law will, will prevail over this agreement in any way, shape or form. So if the statute says that if the state contributes X, the statute prevailed over that. Work, so every big piece of equipment where it's not solely funded by the county commission. We're going to have to look at the funding sources to determine where, who owns it, when you, when you, the fire department decides, we don't want it. So that's, state law will always prevail over that. But this is an agreement subordinate to state law, and these are the stipulations that the county commission is placing upon the taxpayers' money that they're giving out to the. Fire department, so, yeah, we, we can't, uh, agreements are nice, we try to forecast every single situation. But we, we can't possibly know every funding source. Well, that's going to come from and, and the stipulations on that funding source, but we know from our, you know, we'll always be subordinate to state law with respect for that.
No, the big issue, uh. Will there be, Doc, since, since uh. Are there uh. What we have previously submitted as the outdated amounts for each departments, are they going to be in there? Or is there plenty of no dollar to include in here and you decide which department it's now?
Well, I think there's a, there's a form in there that you, that each department fills out on what they're, what they plan on spending and what they need. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
It, what they need for this, that.
Uh, there's commitment from the county commission to uh. Expand a certain amount of money in each department.
So I, what, I think what you're saying is in the past, the county commission looked at the total fire levy dollars. And said, Boomer gets. X amount of it, other fire department gets X amount, and they, they had a lump sum kind of sitting there that they could spend down from. So they understand, we have X amount of dollars for the year from the fire levy, we want to spend down front. And so I think his question is, is the commission still going to operate with respect to, you're going to kind of forecast. For the year, this is the amount that Boomer can spend, this is the amount of Hill can spend, this is the amount. Uh, they, Bill can spend, because that's what was done in the past, and the agreement. It's my understanding, the agreement, i- it would be up to the commission to decide how they want to do, but. I was, I'm unaware of them changing that, but ultimately the commission decision, how they want to allocate. Does, does that make sense, what we're, what, what, what we're saying?
Yeah, the commission's authority to, to, on their request, whether they get it.
That, but also, pro, at the, I guess, beginning of the, beginning of the fiscal year, an amount will be allocated. We talked about that with the line items, remember how each of the fire departments that signed the agreement gets a line item in the budget? That.
Let's say the budget, it's not, not the beginning of the year, it's in the uh, fiscal.
Yes, yes, so it's my understanding, yes, each at the beginning of the fiscal year, a dollar, a lump sum amount will be allocated. For use by that fire department, and in fact, I think it says to provide, they, they talk about an amount that would be offered. Yes, by the request, yes, if that's at form.
If, if you ask each fire department, certainly in the individual request for funding. I think, doesn't that force us to realize we got a problem?
Well, in, in the meeting.
Well, I mean, they're, they're going to have to justify, I mean, listen, every, everybody else who gets money from this county. Including every department and every subdivision of this county, has to submit an annual budget. There's no reason that the fire department should not also have to project their expenditures. Now, I'll tell you that this commission, and you can ask the prosecutor. Um, favors when you come in under budget, and we're not going to punish you next year if you need more money because you came under budget this year. You know, we're going to look at your actual needs and, and try to give you what you want, and that's what we do, but. I mean, we do say no, um, to certain things, I mean, everybody kind of clerk, they come in and they say, well, you know, here's. Here's what I need, and then here's what I would like to add this year. And, and we look at what she would like to add and what the prosecutor would like to add, and everybody across the board and say, okay, here's what we've been for. Now, fire levy, of course, that's going to be coming from a different source, and we'd have to look at it differently, but.
Historically, we've, uh, with the fire departments and the reasonable allocations, and this is the federal ordinance. Uh, the number one being top life. But uh, uh, the evenly distributed, we wanted the special cans. And I'm not implying anything, but. It's realistic, you understand, uh, I take long contracts to the fire departments to sign with no dollar amounts. They're going to worry about political considerations are going to come into effect, uh, when, uh, the admission makes a decision. But that's, that's the first, I'm not saying it's reality, I'm definitely saying it's perception. And, and I think you agree with that, that they've got concerns, they'll wonder.
What, what kind of political consideration?
Well, we need to get more money this time. They've got more of us.
Can I ask, okay, so.
I have no idea how many votes and they have.
So the contract this year should have been based on the budget amount approved in March. Which I've already approved that budget, I feel like the contracts will have the amount set at every year, like everybody else's budget letters, basically. Isn't that how it would work?
Yes.
I kind of see what Steve's saying, because, because before there was this formula, what, what I'm not comfortable with. Like, I understand how Joe and the Fire Association had agreed that, you know, uh, Oak Hill, because of what it does. Gets this percentage, and because the population is presented potentially. I don't like the idea of everybody just having a big pot of money sitting there that they feel free to spend down, whether they can justify it. Along the same lines as every other department. Well, I mean.
It's not even fair.
Well, like, say, okay, so say a smaller fire department really could use new turnout gear. Um, but it has such a small amount of money, and then, but a bigger fire department is saying. Well, you know, we're going to have this gratuitous additional thing, piece of equipment that is great to have, that we don't necessarily need. Because we get more money because we want, you know what I'm saying?
The formula was based on. Every, every firefighter in this county, four hundred of them. Deserve the same protective equipment. Each and every one of them. Fire department had more TV numbers, and had less, but they all deserve that. They all have to heat the buildings, they all have to buy insurance, there's certain base costs, it's going to cost every fire department. And then their operating expenses go up based upon the population. So there, there is a reasonable formula that will be used to try to come up with this. And, and when it started out, every fire department sent out money, because these poor incorporated fire departments that you see in this. He didn't build up. The bigger departments yelled, man, yeah, they said, they told me, I'm going to make this split. But they saw in the end that we were treating everybody the same, and as it went along, we adjusted that point. When everybody, tried to get everybody to the same standard, that everybody in this county had the same. When everybody, tried to get everybody to the same standard, that everybody in this county had the same fire protection as much as possible. Now, if you live on an unapproved road, on the top of a mountain, on the dirt road, that fire truck can't get up, that was your decision, but we try to, to get everybody as much as we can with the same, same protection. And that goes for the firefighter, so, so it's a, it's a reasonable system.
What, what all money was figured years? What, what funding that figured in that, in that amount in, in calculations? Was it, was it just fire levy funding?
Yeah.
If it's a, so let's stake, so what?
If the town could put this money in fire department, well, yeah, there's only two missed out, this, this county, or to the fire department. And they run a volume of power, it's very, because you get paid for power, probably everybody else in the county is squat. And then people want to jack or pre-buy a nice unit, or uniform jack. These volunteers don't see any compensation, and they say, why can't you approve people? We don't. There's, there's reasonable.
If the Fire Association has recommendations about a formula, I'd like to see what they are. I'd like to see what goes into that formula. Um, I'm not opposed to hearing it, I just want to know what goes into it. Um, but for today's purposes, go ahead and vote on, um, our version to provide it to you as our official version, and then we need to move on and take a look at the fire coordinator position.
So, uh, as far as dollars, you're not going to sign a blank contract, I wouldn't recommend it, do you?
And the dollar amounts have already been allocated, I mean, we're in the current fiscal year of, this fiscal year, and that, that dollar amount has already been allocated. Yes.
That needs to have a, it's a, it's a left, it's not, we'll have to get that more.
Agreement, we found, we already had the dollar in that part, we were setting agreements.
Like, it's six dollars?
We.
That's fine.
And you've got some agreements for everybody for that dollar.
That they.
This agreement is the agreement that needs to be signed, we can transfer the dollar.
That, exactly, that, that money has already been voted and allocated by the county commission. That, these are just blanks, so, because they apply equally to every fire department. They will obviously need the individually filled out with the appropriate information for each fire department. The, the dollar amount that was previously allocated in the March thirty-first budgeting of that is the same, there's no change to that. So whatever that dollar amount was previously approved will go on that agreement. For a future year, they will approve an amount that will go on that agreement. That, what they're saying with respect to the approval of certain amounts, I think Commissioner Taylor's saying is, we'll look at your formula, but by, I just want to be careful and caution us, under the Attorney General's opinion, the allocation of money has to be item for item and cannot be a lump sum. So how it's set up now is we're in compliance, because they put a line item there, and then they approve the item, item of item spending down. Okay, so it needs to just be crystal clear to the, the, the fire departments that even if they allocate a hundred thousand dollars for a fire department, that's not a hundred thousand dollars that they can spend willy-nilly, that's item by item by item, they have to approve the spending down. I think that's already happened, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, I'm just saying, we just need to be careful. We're, we're getting caught up in a lump sum amount, and I understand the volunteer fire departments want to know, how much can we spend in a year?
As an attorney, you put your activity on a single block job.
Well, no, and, and I'm not, and nobody is saying.
We've already decided we're going to use.
Right, and, and nobody is saying, right, all, all that they're doing today is saying, this is the contract we approve based upon our, our discussions and my drafting and my presentation to you, for you all to come back and, and look at it. If you have tweaks to it, I guarantee the commission would be interested in seeing those tweaks. I don't think that there's, and I'm not going to speak for them, they, they'll vote and, and speak for them, but it's my understanding that this is their proposal, there's some hard and fast things that they're set on because of law and things like that. But if, if dates want to be tweaked, if, if things want to be tweaked, I'm sure they'll consider it. I mean, I, I'm just based upon my experience with the New River Humane Society, we went back and forth with them. And, and some of the things the Humane Society said, they adopted and said, you know what, you're the experts and you do what you're saying there, we can make that adjust. So I don't think that they're saying that this is, sign it or else, I think it's, look at it, review it, come back to us, and we can talk further.
What I'm saying is, this is kind of, you have to plan, that's the point, that you're pretty certain. As much as possible, do that before you hurt.
Correct, certain amounts, yes. You know, if you're going to spend fifteen thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money, the county commission, who has to approve it anyway, wants to approve it before it gets spent. And I think that everybody, you know, that would be good for the volunteer fire departments before, because if they go out and spend fifteen thousand dollars and they send it to the commission, they say, no! How are you going to fund that fifteen thousand if you were anticipating the fire level? So I think it's a, it's a double-edged protection for everybody.
When you get them listed, it's okay to pay your insurance, it's okay to pay your staff bill, your electric, you know.
Well, I mean, that's something that you pay every year, right? Well, I mean, it could be put in there, if it's, listen, when I, I've done projections, I've done three-year projections, then five-year projections, I went to banks. To me, it's simple, because if you've done this for thirty years, then you know exactly how much you're paying on your power bill in a year's period of time. And I'm just telling you, if, if you talk about, it's going to be hard to put your expenditures out there, to me, it's not.
The only, the only difference is, uh, we will reject something, and then they would have to put money back in the rally, and it was done on the reaverting devices. If they bought something that wasn't good, they had to replace money in the ladder, it was rejected.
Well, um, I, I hear what you're saying.
We're doing this a preavertable way.
For certain amounts, not, not for, you know, under fifteen hundred dollars, spend it quarterly reimbursement, they'll vote up or down on each item that you spent under fifteen hundred dollars in that quarter, they'll vote up and down on those to approve them. For items fifteen hundred to fifteen thousand, you can go to Ruth, and Ruth can give you the approval without a meeting for fifteen thousand and above, come to the commission prior to obligating that month. Again, that saves, it's, it would be an accounting, I mean, if I was a volunteer fire department, I would want to know if I'm about to spend twenty thousand dollars, if they're going to approve that twenty thousand or not, I wouldn't want to put it to their whims and go buy it and use all crap along the hook. So it, it's a protection for everybody, honestly. It, it will help the volunteer fire department not obligate money that they actually don't have, in what the commission's saying, yes, we will pay for this. Fifteen, you know, we approve it, go do it.
That's, that's what we were offering, other, they were, they were careful of this, sorry.
But that's not the commission.
I know.
Yeah, that was not proper, that's not the way it should have worked.
The commission's responsible for that, not, not the fire department.
That he was working with it, the commission, in my case.
Well, that's changed, that's changed. So, um, I moved that we, uh, submit the agreement, the last version of the agreement we all received over the weekend.
One, one attendance, there will be an additional inventory list that Gary had provided, that will be added that I don't have yet. But it, that's it, it, it's an inventory list, doesn't change the agreement, it's just a form.
Yeah, absolutely.
The inventory list, I think he has it right here.
I'll give you our one copy.
We can make.
We get Robert's talking.
Yes, we, yes. We'll, we'll get copies made for you to.
That's what appeared first.
Actually, you could have, I think, that's the G A J, uh.
The, the new one is, did the app, I didn't have that one yet.
They're, they're both the same, just two pages.
We didn't get the copies. Did, I didn't have the second page.
I didn't, I didn't get it.
If they're putting these, but they're, they're.
It was just last up, I didn't get it. From this, they went to things or whatever they, they, they can always.
But this is just, this was not in the copy that was sent to you, because I, I didn't have the second page. We, we did it already, this stuff, inventory list.
Okay, so I, I will change my motion, and then my motion to include the additional catch and H inventory list.
That's it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Will, will make, I'm not a patient.
Okay, we'll get to talk.
Okay, with regard to the fire coordinator position.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I say one thing? Mr. Cook, shake, could you give us some figures on how y'all calculate everything that just starts to have them?
If I can get the current ones, uh, left on my records. In the office.
So you, you may not have a copy where y'all calculate.
I can get you the general gist of.
Okay, curious to see it, I'd like to know if that was too fast.
I'll try to see what.
Thank you.
Get and see if that could.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you.
Okay, did, was this, um, fire coordinator position coordinated within the working group?
Well, what we did is, we put it out, and then I asked the chief or the five members that were there if they had any revisions or anything they wanted to come up with themselves, and I don't believe we had anything. Got it now.
Well, we, as yesterday.
Okay, I apologize.
Actually, at our last meeting, we were supposed to come back this last. We were supposed to.
Did, did.
Review it, you know, and everything.
Now, I apologize, I didn't make it back since vacation.
We didn't get, we didn't get the changes that you all made, we didn't use our contract, we've not seen you do that.
I thought we gave you that originally, though, at the first meeting.
That was, said you'd make changes to what the original one was.
I know, but we gave you the up-to-date one in that meeting, was it the first meeting?
We gave, we gave them the one that had the deputy and the fire coordinator, the fire coordinator and. All of us that you maintained the same, and that's what we were going to bring back to the, the last two.
Okay.
Gary's not seen this either.
All right, soundbite, next meeting material to me.
That's what I was feeling, you say I haven't read it, but I think it's.
Yeah, so, um, so I moved that we postponed once our next meeting, the twenty-first, um, the fire coordinator position to the twenty-first.
That's it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're, we're.
We're going to be, we're going to be gone, yeah.
So.
Even today, we'll leave some of it now.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm looking right now.
If you can give us the copy of what you all proposed, or you can do it, we can, I don't see it going off. I don't have anything that is in there.
I just got this copy and.
Okay.
Give everybody.
Okay, okay.
We can get, um, Robert to make copies. All right, so at this time, um, commission's going to have to go into executive session to discuss multiple employee performance issues in addition to the exhibit A, item five, um, possible building purchase, how part of the probation office. Well, let's go ahead and take a, a ten-minute break before we start, and then meet in Ruth's office at ten fifteen.
That's it.
Okay, um, we're returning from executive session, it's twelve oh seven, where we discussed, as I mentioned, multiple employee performance issues, uh, no decisions were made about those issues. We received information, but no decisions have been made at the state. With regard to exhibit A, item five, building purchase, um, agreement, uh, the commission has instructed its council to, uh, enter negotiations with the building owner and, uh, make an offer according, according to some privileged feedback, and the reason, and the statute to refer to that, uh, allows us to keep that privilege for the time being while we're in negotiations for the purchase, the ultimate purchase price will be a matter of record, but it is West Virginia Code six dash nine, capital A, dash four, lowercase b, nine. So, uh, that is the statutory code that allows us to keep private what our initial offer is going to be. But again, once we get to a purchase price, that will be in public meeting before the commission, before we actually allocate, spend the money. Uh, but it is within the range of the appraised value, so, of the property, which we'd already had done. Um, with that, is there anything else that I'm missing? All right, I move we adjourn.
Check.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm on, I'm on.